Okay, so before we get into the meetings, I am going to just spend a couple of minutes to set the stage, if you will. So the redesign of the SMA's regional governance approach was an effort that started probably two to three years ago, and it very much was inspired by the changes that were afoot at the Saskatchewan Health Authority and the reflection and need to think about how do we modify our regional governance model at the Saskatchewan Medical Association so that, again, it aligns and it works in the health system context that we're working in? So that work started a couple of years ago and had extensive consultation and engagement with medical staff association leadership. At the time, they were RMA leaders. We surveyed them, we met with them, and we provided regular updates to the Representative Assembly on that work. In the spring of 2021, the Representative Assembly passed four resolutions that basically guided or directed us at the SMA to then begin implementing those changes around the regional governance model. And that kickstarted the commencement of proposed bylaw amendments as they related to the regional medical associations converting to the medical staff associations, what we call the Chapter Seven bylaws within our SMA bylaws. The second piece was the SMA governance review. And this came about in the spring, at the Spring RA, where a resolution was brought to the RA for the organization to consider an external governance review that would look at the structure and processes and one that would look at, you know, contemporizing our governance processes with a particular focus on, again, transparency, nomination, and election processes. And there was considerable deliberation to that resolution, which was referred to the Board of Directors from May 2021 up until the Fall RA in November. At the Fall RA in November, a presentation was made that provide a snapshot of, you know, the SMA's governance structure and high-level processes, as well as a cross-country scan of medical association governance, basically to bring greater awareness of what we are currently working with. At that time, the RA then presented another resolution that was passed, which was to create a special committee on SMA governance. That committee was elected by and from the Representative Assembly. And Dr. Scharfstein, who is a consultant, will get into more of that. So both the work that we were doing on bylaws, the work that was unfolding with the SMA governance review, was brought then to our AGM last month, as well as our Spring Representative Assembly. And as most, if not all, of you on the call may be aware, we did not conclude those discussions. There was a very full, robust discussion at our AGM, and we were not able to, again, conclude that discussion, nor be able to receive the report from the Special Committee on Governance. So this is really what has brought us together. There were a couple of motions at the AGM that called for a continuation of the discussion that was presented at the AGM, as well as a convening of, pardon me, not a convening, but the consideration of that special committee report that was supposed to be tabled at the Spring RA to be presented at a later date, but ideally to coincide with a special meeting of the general membership. So this is why we're doing this. It was asked of us to bring these topics together. And without question, bylaws and governance are intertwined. So the focus of these sessions is really information sharing and focusing on the go-forward plan. What is our plan as we think about the bylaw amendments and the governance considerations of the Special Committee on SMA Governance? So this is why we're hosting it. We also felt a meeting in an evening on June. We didn't know it was going to be the first night of the Stanley Cup playoffs, I'm sorry to say. But regardless, we felt that a meeting that would be facilitated was really helpful for us to start a series of important conversations with members. So, and we felt that June was important because anything after June was not going to happen until September. And we wanted to keep the conversation fresh, if you will. So that was the reason for a June meeting in terms of these discussions. Now, the board was thoughtful about this session being facilitated, and we thought, who better to go to than Dr. Visvanathan, who is the speaker of the Representative Assembly, given his knowledge and his experience and his effectiveness with facilitating meetings? Now, this importantly would avail the opportunity for our president, as well as our board, to be active participants in the discussion. Because anybody knows who chairs a meeting, chairing and participating in a session can be difficult. So we wanted to honor and respect the opportunity for the president, and by extension, the board, to be active participants. So that is the why behind, or pardon me, the why and the how behind this meeting. The meetings are conjoined, if you will, because of the intertwining of bylaw amendment discussions and governance discussions in general. And the reason we wanted to have this meeting facilitated by Dr. Visvanathan was, again, because of his familiarity, his experience, his knowledge of, you know, effective meeting rules and oversight, and really to ensure that everyone who wants to contribute to this conversation will be able to have the opportunity to engage in the discussion. So that is the, hopefully, quick snapshot in terms of setting the stage for tonight. So before we go any further, I guess, with that very quick overview, the question that I'm going to pose to folks on this call, if I can pop it up, let's see if I can get it. Okay, my animation isn't working. Let's go like this. Oops, I don't want that yet, folks. Is, I had a piece on my slide, there we go. Are there any concerns with the approach for tonight's meetings? So I'd like to hear from you. Are there any concerns with the why we are doing what we're doing, this, these two meetings that are conjoined or coinciding, and how we are doing it in terms of having the support of Dr. Visvanathan facilitate the meetings? Any concerns with what we are proposing tonight? So I'm going to look to my SMA team to let me know if there are any questions in the, or hands up in the participants? Okay, so according to my screen, I do believe I see Dr. Geller. Dr. Geller, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I'm just wondering if you could clarify the powers.
I think Dr. Geller is unmuted, but I can't seem to hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, so bear with us, Dr. Geller. So I'm looking to my technical team, and we're just finding out why we can't hear Dr. Geller. Okay, so. So people are saying that they're hearing Dr. Geller. Unfortunately, the room that I am in, I am not able to hear him. So. Again, just bear with us. I appreciate your patience. And again, I apologize, folks, for this technical difficulty. We thought everything was working when we did a bit of a trial run this afternoon, but sometimes you can't predict everything that's going to happen. So again, thanks for your patience.
Brian, it's Keisha. I just want to test the audio in our studio. Can you hear me, Brian?
Yeah, I can hear you very well.
Okay, and I can hear you fine. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna duct tape an approach. So what we're gonna try is, I'm going to ask one of my colleague's computers to be on, microphone to be on, and we'll hear it that way, okay? So, Dr. Scharfstein, you are right beside me. Dr. Gevery, can you please turn off your mute? Or turn your mute on? My mute is gonna go on. Dr. Scharfstein, unmute yourself. And Dr. Geller, please try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And sorry for the trouble you're having. I guess I just would like you to ask if you could clarify the powers of this meeting.
Okay, well, maybe I will look for a little bit more information about the powers of the meeting. Can you explain that a little bit further? Again, Dr. Visvanathan is strictly to facilitate, looking at the chat to see who's in the chat that's put up, not the chat, the participant list, to put up their hand, to acknowledge that they put up their hand, and then to ask who may want to respond from that. So that, it's a Q and A, and again, with the principle of trying to facilitate as many voices as possible joining the conversation. So that's, I hope I've answered your question sufficiently, but if not, please try a little bit more with what you mean by powers.
Well, no, no, thank you for that. And that's not, that's not a gap you want to make. I mean, I guess, I mean, it's, the function you just described for Dr. Visvanathan is different than I imagine the function of a chair. However, what I meant was, like, so is this an AGM? Does this meeting have the power to create motions and pass resolutions that have an effect? Or, you know, can this group vote on bylaw amendments and have those go into effect? Like, you know, what, you know, if, if, if there is the power to draft a motion and pass a resolution, what does that obligate SMA to do with it? Or is this merely an information session where the expectation is people will receive information from the board, from the Special Committee on Governance, and from any other source that the SMA feels is appropriate?
So. I will try and answer from the knowledge I have of the current bylaws, Brian. I, my sense would be, first, this isn't an AGM. It is a special meeting of the membership. So it wouldn't have the significant power an AGM has is to approve or modify bylaw amendments. It would not have that power. It does have the ability and the option to pass resolutions. And as with an AGM, a resolution passed by a meeting, either AGM or general membership, is a recommendation which can be made to the board or the RA, not binding, but obviously would carry some weight. So my sense is it would not be inappropriate to have resolutions or motions posed and voted and passed, and those would be directed either to the board or to the RA. But not being an AGM, it would not have the authority to actually pass bylaw amendments, which is really the only significant power, so to speak, that an AGM has uniquely.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Geller, is there anything further?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me now, but I keep getting messages that the host won't allow me to unmute. So, but no, I mean, yeah, that does clarify. So, thanks. And so that does, however, bring into question the role of Dr. Visvanathan, that if he's merely monitoring the chat or if he's actually the chair, which would be a departure from what one would expect from the bylaws. But that, that would be perhaps a reasonable departure.
Again, as I've said before, the primary focus with Dr. Visvanathan and the special meaning of the general membership is to facilitate, it is to navigate the participant dialogue in the Q and A. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or concerns? I don't believe I'm seeing any hands up. So again, thank you for that. And I'm going to then, again, the wording on this is to call to order, but let's start the meeting and allow Dr. Visvanathan to, again, introduce our speaker very briefly and then pass it to our presenter. Okay, Dr. Visvanathan?
Thank you. And Bonnie, let me just double-check audio. You can hear me okay, Bonnie? I saw your hands go up in perplexness. I think Brian Geller could hear me. Yeah, okay. So everyone can hear me except Bonnie. So we're gonna go ahead. Good evening, everyone. I'm Keisha Visvanathan. I work as a urologist in Saskatoon, and I'm really pleased to serve as facilitator for this evening's two meetings discussing governance review. And we'll have a question-answer session, discussion at the end of the presentation. And most importantly, let's get on with the presentation. Let me introduce someone who all of you know. Dr. Brian Scharfstein has been consulting with the SMA about governance review. He's made presentations at the last few RAs and is here with us this evening to give more details and answer our questions. Dr. Scharfstein, please go ahead.
Thank you, Keisha. And hopefully, everyone can hear me and interrupt if you can't. And thank you for the introduction to, as you've alluded, someone who maybe didn't need an introduction, fortunately. And the other piece of good news was we're almost on time, so that will hopefully bode well. I want to start, though, by answering a question you might have is, why is he presenting? I am presenting not what I think, nor what I necessarily would suggest. I am presenting a distillation of what would be the consensus, suggestions, recommendations, first, for this first session of the Board of Directors, and then subsequently, the Special Committee. And I've had the good fortune, and I mean that, to work with both in terms of this overall review of governance. So they have asked if I would attempt, and you'll be the judge of that, to succinctly put into a slide presentation for you where we've been and where we're going, and help, with help, Keisha, to guide the discussion. But again, I want to emphasize, these are the recommendations and suggestions, and the substance of the discussion is reflected in what the Board of Directors thinks. And of course, many, if not most, if not all of them are on the line, including John here with us, to be able to answer any questions. So what are we gonna do? We've already done the first bullet, which is why are we here? Bonnie, I think, has kind of summarized how we got to this point, and as well, gave you a brief snapshot of the AGM that we just finished. And so the major chunk of work, which we'd like to get done in the next half hour or so, is to think about where to next, to actually find a solution to introduce bylaw amendments that will make the association stronger, more effective, more efficient. And I'll come to a couple of things on that. What is governance? Bottom line, it's how the, it's how the association does its business and how it manages its affairs. It is incredibly important and incredibly boring, but I think it is worth the time that you're going to spend trying to do it. And I would observe, if you get it right, the organization will operate smoothly with a lot of support from its members for a very long time. If we don't get it right, there will be potentially significant problems, worth the investment. In terms of the governance review process, the, Bonnie has already identified, three different things came together over the last two or three years. The reorganization of the regional medical associations to medical staff associations, which resulted in the need for, first of all, in-depth, deep discussions with the old regional medical associations, including the Presidents' and Presidents' Forum, the Fall Tour, and therefore, a new set of organizations, the medical staff associations, which required some bylaw changes. In addition, at that same time, the thought was, while we're doing that, the board said, there's some cleaning up we could do. Let's not get into anything significant and potentially controversial because we have a special committee looking into governance, RA direction. But we could tighten up the bylaws and put them into alignment with current practice. That was the full package that was presented to the Fall RA, which didn't get fully discussed. In addition, the Special Committee is working at the request of the RA, and what it's considering overlaps significantly with what the, what is being considered by the Board of Directors. So the thought was, first of all, at the last meeting of the RA and AGM, put those sessions together because they overlap a lot in terms of what they're covering, and subsequently, tonight as well. In terms of the resolutions, the outcome of those resolutions will be the substance of what we'll chat about and what I'll try to cover in the next session with the RA. I would encourage everyone on this call that is a member, not a delegate to the RA, to stay on the line. Your input is invaluable. And the fact that you're willing to join this meeting on an evening in June, I think emphasizes how valuable that would be. So please stay. In terms of the governance review process, as referenced, a lot has gone on over the last two years, which I won't repeat. And similarly, the bylaw amendment process, then, it was essentially a two-stage approach. One is the AGM process, and the second would have been the Special Committee's bylaw amendments, which would be coming a year from now. So, as referenced, the board did present to the AGM in May, on May 6th, a suite of bylaw amendments. Next slide, Bonnie, and you have been given a full, detailed package. I'm not going to assume that you've read every word or necessarily in detail or understood it, hence the need for dialogue and discussion. I would suggest, though, that since this particular meeting, as I think Dr. Geller's question noted, doesn't have the authority to approve specific bylaw amendments, our time would just be spent saying, well, then what should we do? What would be the work plan to achieve appropriate bylaw amendments that are well-understood by the membership, well-discussed, and presented in a format that affords proper dialogue and discussion? And that's what we're going to do. So I'm not going to go through any of the proposals that were made. They're in your package that went to the, before the AGM, and as well, that you could link to for this meeting. I'll only note that there are really three categories. There are all those changes in Chapter Seven, which are about medical staff associations, and there will be additional ones from the Special Committee's work, which we'll come to. There were some content changes, though, either to add clarity. I would say those are pretty non-controversial, but also for alignment. And some of those had significant implications, and observations have been made at the meeting, as well as subsequently. For example, the Policy and Legislative Committee. Does it exist? Should it exist? What should it do? So there are a number of significant content issues as well that were not debated or discussed at the AGM. And finally, there were lots of editorial housekeeping changes, non-controversial. Next slide, synopsis. Quite simple, we didn't get it done. We did get some discussion of Chapter Seven. A proposal was made to refer several of those amendments to the Special Committee on Governance. That was debated at length. It was passed by one vote, so it was a very close vote in terms of what should we do with those. And subsequently, the Chapter Seven amendments were passed. None of the others were discussed or passed. And eventually, a motion was made to adjourn, basically, the meeting and call a special meeting to continue the discussion, which is this meeting. So where does that leave us? Some bylaw amendments were passed. Most weren't. There was no Legend Policy Committee in place in the preceding year. And there was a resolution that was not debated that would have given the board the authority to assume the powers of the Legend Policy Committee in its absence, but that was not discussed. So even accepting that the ones that were passed are enforceable is somewhat problematic. Needless to say, it's a bit of a mess. The suggestion was made, and it seemed to be fairly significant support amongst members at the AGM, that the Special Committee would be an appropriate place for consideration of these bylaw amendments. And of course, at the RA, unfortunately, time also did not allow for the Special Committee to present its deliberations, and that will come following this meeting. So what next? What I will attempt to outline for you is the deliberations of the senior staff and the board in terms of how can we get to the desired goal, which is a set of bylaw amendments that the profession is proud of, feels that they have had adequate opportunity to have input, and that we are comfortable will make the association more effective and more efficient. To do that, the first suggestion is, let's just take a pause and, in a sense, start again somewhat afresh, but not lose all the work that's been done for the last two or three years. So we would keep the same event, the current bylaws, for another year. We've lived with them for several years now when they're not completely in step. Another year, we don't sense that that would be problematic. Continue, continue, consider expanding the mandate of the Special Committee of the RA to ask it to also include consideration of all of the board-proposed bylaw amendments. And to spend the next year consulting with and considering their original work plus this new set of work, which would be those board-proposed bylaw amendments. This would require extending the term of that committee, which the RA would be asked to do for another year, with the expectation that the Special Committee on Governance would bring to an AGM in the spring of 2023 a full slate of bylaw amendments for consideration. In addition, the board would be asked to appoint a Legend Policy Committee because the current bylaws require that. And we should try to stay in step with those bylaws. It would, it could be an interim, and it would be for now, pending the outcome of the deliberations of the Special Committee as to what should be the final disposition of the Legend Policy Committee. Should it continue? Should it be an RA-elected committee? Should it be a board-appointed committee? Could the board assume its responsibilities? Those would be all questions for the Special Committee first to deliberate, then to have discussions with the board, with the RA, on the Fall Tour, et cetera. So if you, if, if that was an acceptable next steps forward process, and we're going to ask shortly for your commentary on that, the from now to May of 2023 would look sort of like this. The next six months, the Special Committee would continue its work and assume some new responsibilities, including those board bylaw amendments. Particularly in the fall, there would be significant, hopefully, member engagement and feedback through MSA meetings, Presidents' Forum, the Fall Tour. through MSA meetings, President's Forum, the Fall Tour, surveys of the members, President's Letters, e-news, et cetera. This would culminate then in a report to the RA, not with the bylaw amendments, but with a clear summary of what the Special Committee is recommending for consideration and debate at the RA. We would envisage a fairly robust members forum linked with that. So non-RA delegates would have the opportunity to also hear the full presentation and understand and ask questions. This would be followed then by another six months of opportunity to finalize the recommendations by the Special Committee based on all of that feedback, and then to circulate that for comment and consideration by members, et cetera. Finally, culminating in a May 2023 RA and AGM, where the specific bylaw amendments as well as other recommendations, because the Special Committee is not just presenting suggested bylaw amendments. In fact, most of what they're presenting is suggestions on how to do work better, changes to processes, protocols, et cetera. So there'd be a combination, and they would present those to the Spring 2023 RA. And depending on which of those are accepted, that would determine the next steps in the following year. That summarizes, as best I can, what I think were the deliberations and consensus of a way forward from the Board of Directors and from the senior staff. And I'm going to stop there and first welcome any of those folks if they want to comment or add clarity or suggest maybe there were other issues that were of importance. But then we would like to open this up, the discussion, or your feedback, and to get a sense of whether you feel this is a reasonable approach to dealing with those bylaw amendments.
Dr. Sharstein, thank you very much. To proceed with some discussion, I'd like to suggest a couple of things. First of all, if you can turn on your video, please do, especially if you've got questions to ask. We'd love to see you. If you're in a safe place and it's not violating anyone around you's privacy, please put your video on. It'll also build collegiality to see everybody out, as has been mentioned, on a June evening. Also, please raise your hand, as Bonnie mentioned, go down to the reactions box and raise your hand, and we'll keep track of who has questions. And then we'll go in turns, and some people might like to ask a few questions. But we'd like to give everybody a chance to speak once or ask their first question, and then we'll come back to people's second questions. So if you're in line and you're wondering, hey, I haven't had my chance yet, you might be in your second turn and we're waiting for first people. So I invite anyone who has any questions or comments, please raise your hand in the reactions box, and we look forward to your questions for Dr. Sharstein. Julie, I'm going to check with you. Do you have anyone in line yet? Some people may still be digesting what was said, so we'll give it a couple of minutes.
And while we're doing that, Kishore, just to emphasize, the most important thing I would say from this session, because we will have a follow-up now, where, as I say, I would like you all to stay, we really want to be sure you're comfortable that this is a process that feels right for you. You say, yeah, this feels like you're going down a road, you've turned it over to a group we trust, you've indicated a process we're comfortable with. Or if there are any questions about that or clarification. The specifics of the bylaw amendments themselves will get discussed, and I would encourage any of you, and kudos to Dr. Geller for this. He took the time to write specifically the amendments that he had issues of concern with. That is extremely helpful. And I would encourage any of you, when we're done this, and I hope I piqued your interest, you'll go back to these and you'll say, yeah, I want to know more about this, or I don't agree with that. That would be very helpful and encouraged, in addition to the meetings and other dialogue that will occur.
Thanks, Brian. We do have some people who'd like to participate. Can we go first to Dr. Lettingham? Please, go ahead. Oh, you're still muted there. Can we let Dr. Lettingham unmute, please? Go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. No, thank you for this, and I really, I do like the plan in terms of a greater and more in-depth consultation, because I think this is really important, and I very much appreciated the report from the Special Committee. I must admit, I did think there were still some things I was uncertain if all my original concerns had been addressed. So I think a chance to discuss and have the full membership review will be good. I'm just wondering what the difference is in terms of, and maybe Dr. Sharstein can explain this, in terms of just extending the term of the Special Committee on Governance, which I believe you're proposing is the preferred option versus the interim Legislation and Policy Committee and then sort of tossing the Special Committee into it.
That's important clarification, for sure. Both need to occur. So what we're seeing is there is a special committee, but it was appointed by the RA, elected by the RA with a specific mandate and term to report back at this last spring's RA. What we're saying now is these other amendments fit within their area of expertise now. We will ask them to take them on, and we have met, you know, I met with that committee, and the committee says, we are willing to do that. But in doing so, they need to have approval of their boss, which is the RA. So they'll be asking, I say, is it okay for us to keep going for another year and to do more than you told us to do originally? And my assumption is in this next meeting to follow immediately after this, the RA will be asked to do that specifically. Now, at the same time, our bylaws say there also needs to be, there's a little nuance, which is a bit confusing in our bylaws, is a Legend Policy Committee, that's completely separate, needs to see and be asked for their opinion about any bylaw amendments. A Legend Policy Committee hasn't existed for a couple of years, and there was going to be a suggestion from the board to the AGM that the board could assume that responsibility. And Dr. Geller and others have said, maybe that's not a good idea, maybe there should be one. So the suggestion is to deal with that, appoint a Legend Policy Committee to do that work. Whether it will continue will be determined by the AGM a year from now.
Okay, okay. And how many members would that committee have in addition to the Special Committee, Dr. Sharstein?
So it isn't restricted specifically. Typically, it's two to five members, and they're all appointed by the board. So the committee has to be appointed by the board, that's been the standard. I will flag, because that's coming to the RA, the Special Committee has agreed and would volunteer to be members of that Legend Policy Committee because of the intimate overlap. So one or more of the Special Committee members are willing to serve in the board, and I would ask anyone from the board or otherwise to comment. But in the board discussion of that, the suggestion was it would be important to canvass the membership, as they do for any committee, to say, anybody out there interested? Because if you are, we should consider you for the committee. So there would be the opportunity for any member interested when they're canvassed, which will happen sometime in the next month, two or three. There would be a canvassing of all members, saying, we need members for the Legend Policy. If you're interested, let us know. Some of those may be appointed, in addition to some or all of the members of the current Special Committee on Governance.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Letting, can we please unmute Dr. Letting? And hi, Dr. Letting, go ahead. We'll just unmute you here.
So I have to agree, it appears. Okay, well, what I wanted to say is that I didn't see this as a matter of choice. To me, it was kind of like all of the above should happen, and the agenda seemed to be pretty reasonable. So I don't know where there's any part of it that shouldn't happen. I see advantage to having consultation with the Legislation Committee that isn't there right now and they're performing it. I see advantages to having the Special Committee in place to, that already have expertise and focus to deal with it. Therefore, you know, deferring till the spring of '23 seems to make sense, and the agenda, to me, also makes sense. So I'm on board with what you're doing and thinking, unless I'm missing something, I want to see you go ahead and do all of it.
That's wonderful news.
Thanks, Dr. Letting. Can we hear from Dr. Parai, please? Can you unmute Dr. Parai? Go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks. So, you know, I think all the proposed next steps are, seem pretty reasonable. My only question is, do we need to extend the committee until spring? Or can we, like, would consideration of extending it until the Fall RA and discussing the amendments at that point, would that be enough time?
It's possible. In the fall, two important points to that, I think, and it's a good question. The amendments themselves to the bylaws can only be discussed at an annual general meeting, and that will occur in May of 2023. So given that that needs to be the case, and the board emphasized quite some time ago, because the timeframe for the Special Committee to wrap up was much shorter at one point. And as we were discussing this and we were explaining to the board what they're doing, the board made a very clear statement. Do it right, not quick. And so take your time, however long it takes. What's far more important when you're done isn't the specific words of these bylaws. It's what does the membership think? Do they feel comfortable and confident that they have been involved, they've been consulted? They know what we're doing, they know where we're going? This is kind of the discussion that went on by the board. So the idea was, okay, let's take another year. And particularly now, at that time, it was expected that that package of bylaw amendments from the board would have passed. Now it didn't. So it even makes it more important to continue perhaps for a year. But that's the particular, why May '23 is kind of a hard-stop date.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other comments to be made? If so, please raise your hand. Dr. Geller? Can we unmute Dr. Geller, please? Thanks, go ahead.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Thanks for the time. And I agree that the general outline is presented by Dr. Sharstein is quite reassuring. I have a couple of comments, if I may. One is, I think that the Special Committee and the LPC should remain distinct. I think that a significant conflict of interest may very well be a real or even imagined if we have a committee recommending to itself what the bylaw changes might be. Or a significant overlap of membership may also, just the appearance of it may not be quite exactly what we would like to see. I guess the only I would ask is that in the timelines that have been laid out, because I do feel that the full year is appropriate, is that these not be rolled into things such as the President's Forum and the Fall Tour and those sorts of things? I mean, some of the Fall Tours, unless they've been significantly altered in the last little while. I mean, the time the SMA is given for the president to address is not always unlimited. And some of the RMAs in the past have limited that quite dramatically, and I'm pretty sure that hasn't gotten much better. I do think that there needs to be dedicated, special meetings to discuss this. I mean, the fundamental principles of how we govern ourselves, how we elect our representatives, how we have conversations among ourselves to decide what is important to the profession cannot take second place to anything, and it should not be a time-rushed thing. I would, I'm heartened to hear Dr. Sharstein say the board said this should be done right, not quickly. These are fundamental changes to how we govern ourselves, and they need to be considered quite deeply. So I would ask that that amendment be made, that these be dedicated, local engagements, and not just at the MSA level, but perhaps even at smaller levels. We do know that some of the MSAs can be quite large, and people don't actually want to drive, even between Estevan and Weyburn, which is only an hour. People don't tend to show up very much. Finally, I guess I would ask that the board and the Special Committee and the RA seriously consider the engagement of an external facilitator, someone from outside the organization. And I honor Dr. Sharstein's knowledge of the organization and his commitment to making it better for longer than I'm sure he would like us to mention. But I do think that, you know, a lot of the governance principles that we use now, the parliamentary model we use now, were developed when communication was slow and travel was hard, and neither of those things are true now. And there are modern thoughts around governance that incorporate the fact that communication is fast and travel's not hard. And I think it might be very advantageous for the organization to engage external consultants who are familiar with some of the more, I mean, I hesitate to say modern, because it's not really what it is, but some of the governance structures that can take advantage of some of the changes that have come with travel and communication in the last little while. And I would ask that that be a very, the board and the RA strongly consider, including that. There's no point in having a motion, because it doesn't carry any more weight than what I just said.
Thanks, Brian. Clearly, and most people are all on the line as well, and they've heard you. And I will endeavor to make sure that your recommendations and suggestions, along with the others that you've made, are considered by the board and RA and the Special Committee. And in regard to an outside expert, you're absolutely right, I am not an expert, and I am deeply embedded within the SMA. I'm also deeply committed to it, it is a labor of love. But they definitely have sought outside information. So we have, through the work of the Special Committee, provided them with a lot of information about how others do business. But we have not retained an additional so-called expert consultant, which you're suggesting might be prudent. So I think they've heard you, and anyone is welcome to comment or make observations if they wish to that as to the propriety or need for that. And perhaps that's also an important kind of consideration when you see the full scope of what the Special Committee has done today in their presentation to the RA, because there was a fair bit of consideration of others and how they do business, but not with an expert outside consultant.
Thank you. We have another comment from Dr. Letting. Can we please unmute Dr. Letting? Go ahead, Dr. Letting.
Yes, I'm presuming in this process that when we're done it, we're going to have a stronger, better SMA. And personally, I think that is what we need, because I'm a little disillusioned with the whole system right now and the way we seem to be getting not better but worse in terms of providing useful access to our patients. I know it's a plodding process, but I think that the best information and wisdom comes from in-house. I'm not sure exactly who Brian is thinking we're going to bring from outside. I certainly think the more opinions we get, the better. But I think the best opinions we're going to get will be SMA. And I think the SMA has to become much stronger in its influence. We are becoming weaker with SHA, we're becoming diluted in government. I find that our medical school is not achieving what I think it needs to achieve for a rural province. I see so many areas that have to be improved, and I think that we know the answer. And I think that we know the answers better than an outside organization. I'd be, you can't hear too many people. You can't get too many opinions. But let's not get the idea in our head that somebody outside our organization knows more than we do, because they don't think they do. I think our biggest challenge is for us to get our act together, work together and actually communicate, which is what this process seems to be trying to do. And I can't imagine what anybody's going to tell us, except maybe how to get together better. If they can help with the process and lead us to the leadership, I think we might come out of it okay. But I, just a little leery about handing off to somebody else and saying, oh, somebody else can do this better. Because I don't actually believe that.
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Letting. Dr. Nabuka, can we unmute Dr. Nabuka, please? Go ahead, Dr. Nabuka.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good evening, fellow colleagues. Namde Ndubeka here, joining the meeting from this Albert. I want to make a comment, not just as a member of SMA, but also as a member of the special committee on SMA governance, which I'm very privileged to serve on. Just commenting a little bit in terms of how we've been undertaking this work since we were elected. Not to discredit comments from Dr. Geller in terms of the proposition for an external consultant. I think it's, it's a good idea. But when we take a step back and look at where we started from in terms of this process, which followed the comprehensive environmental scan that Bonnie and her staff undertook across PTMA's to try to look at, you know, what is going on and what can we learn from them? And that presentation was made to, to the area and the general body. Dr. Sharpton have also been an incredible resource and I must give him kudos because the amount of resources and the wealth of knowledge that he brings to the table to guide the work that we do as a committee have been second to none. And I really want to state categorically that I personally do have a lot of confidence in the process that we are following right now and in the approach that we're taking to make sure that we engage the general membership, including the RA delegates. And we need to trust that we are the best resource that we can get. People like yourself, Dr. Geller, we've, we've, we've had a lot from you and we really appreciate the comments and those are the things that we want to hear. We want to be criticized so that at the end of the day, constructively, we can collectively put out a clear governance process, a clear bylaw that will guide our association going forward. So again, for me, I think we have the best resource in-house that would enable us to get to where we want to be slowly but sure. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Lenny Pille, can we please unmute Dr. Pille? Can we unmute Dr. Pille, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Dr. Vissvadhan. My video is giving me some problems just using this iPad. So hopefully you can bear with me. Lenny Pille, ENT down in Regina, also member on the SMA Governance Committee. Thank you for allowing me to be on that committee, fellow colleagues. You know, a couple of comments that I'd like to make is that certainly the process that we've engaged in and the work that the Governance Committee has done so far is, is very, is very good. Welcome to encouraging change in our organization and good change. In terms of the appointment of an added external reviewer, I kind of agree with Dr. Nabuka here and Dr. Letting that I don't think we'll add any more value presently. We may add value as an, for an external reviewer, if it's some sort of legal resource or somebody who, you know, needs to tweak some sort of legal thing in the bylaws that we have missed. That's where I would see a value for any additional resource. I do like some of the ideas that have been bounced around in terms of, we need to go slow with the reform because we have a good chance to make it right and a good chance to make it last for many years. So, you know, thinking that this is only going to take six months or a year may not be the ideal. My idea would be that there would be general amendments, which we looked at as typographical kind of changes, for example, from RAs, sorry, regional medical associations, MSAs, those little small areas can be cleared up in the next few months or in the next AGM. And then the nitty gritty is what we really want to make big changes to with the nominations committee, for example, and the powers of the nominations committee. And we need to take our time while doing that. So, you know, there is time, there is place, and we can do that slowly. I also like the other idea that we can decant a lot of the discussions for changes to the smaller meetings. Because there are many people who won't stand up in this meeting and talk because they just won't do it. But at a smaller gathering, they may talk and we can get ideas from them. So at the local MSAs, local RAs, you know, we can get those ideas. And even with the meetings with the president's tour, I would encourage that. And we can bring those ideas to whether it's the Governance Committee or the LPC Committee, which is resuscitated. We can incorporate that into the bylaw changes and then present that at the May, spring RA next year, and then continue with the process. So I would like to continue to encourage the engagement of the membership with those ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pille. We are at the part of this meeting when we need to prepare to move on to the next meeting. And so I would like to give Dr. Sharstein a final comment, if he would like to, because I know that there is an expression of intent that we'd like to put out, worded as a motion, but I think as an expression of intent. Dr. Sharstein?
No, I'm fine. I appreciate the input. I appreciate the interest people have in this. I think that bodes well for the next stage of reconfiguring and reinvigorating the association. So I think that's, that's very helpful and the commentary has been as well. And as you say, we just have a straw dog resolution, so to speak, to get a feeling, a general sense of intent, which I think we've got from the conversation, but could get specific direction with a resolution.
Can we see that, please? So as pointed out, this is worded as a resolution and it's really to get a general expression of, of support for these, this presentation. And as you see, be it resolved that the general membership approves the work plan and referral of the board. Board proposed bylaw amendments to the special committee on SMA governance as presented. And so we'd like to take a poll and see what the general support for, for this is. Can we open the poll, please? Okay, the poll is open. We have 30 seconds. Well, the results of the poll are favorable. Dr. Sharstein, you can see that. Is there, before we move on to a short break and then the next meeting, any final comments, Dr. Sharstein?
Just thank you. Your support is warmly received. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board and others who've contributed to thinking about where to next. And so thank you for that endorsement. And we will make every effort, or I will attempt, to help the board and the committee make every effort to carry out the intent, which is that engagement as we move forward.
Thanks. Oh, sorry, I see Dr. Geller is waving his hand. Can you unmute Dr. Geller, please?
Yeah, I thank you. I just wanted to, I mean, I tried to raise my hand before you moved to the vote and it's not that I disagree with the vote. But it's, I just think, I just wanted to clarify what I meant by an external consultant. I mean, none of us are experts on engagement and none of us are experts on governance. We are absolutely experts on what we want as physicians and how, and how we want to be governed. But I think it's reasonable to consider, you know, these are the things that we don't know, right? This, you know, how can we maximize the use of social media, for instance, or Zoom meetings to engage our membership? If anyone had ever asked me if we'd have 72 people on the line at nine, or at five minutes after seven on the 15th of June, I would have given $500,000 bet to them that that would never have happened. Okay, so I guess it's, part of my point is, is that these, these new modalities of talking to people can be leveraged in a, in a very dramatic way. And none of us are experts in that.
Thank you. We are going to move on. So I have 19:06 on my clock. We'll have a five-minute break. So please check your clock at five minutes. And by my clock, we're going to reconvene for the RA, a special meeting of the RA at 19:11. All right, we'll see you in five minutes.